This is the May 4, 2023, meeting of the Rockport Planning Board. All members are present with the exception of Peter Cutner, who had a planned absence, said he wasn't going to be here. So we have four members. We do have a quorum and we'll proceed with the meeting. First item of business on our agenda is a first of two public comment periods. Any member of the public isn't told to comment about any matters relating to planning. So anybody out there who wants to make a comment? No, no comments. So we'll move on. Okay. Approval of the minutes. We'll move on to the minutes of this would be in the April 6 and the minutes of April 20. So let's start with the minutes of April 6. The additions, corrections or deletions for those minutes.
Yeah, I had a few, Jason. Paragraph three, right at the end. It says change Gloucester to Rockport. I just was gonna add the words in the specification notes or wherever that was. On that drawing there.
No discussion. This is for the Jordan's Lane. Approved with one change, change Gloucester to Rockport.
Yeah, I think that was regarding where there's they had in their specs to meet this city of Gloucester specs instead of the town of Rockport specs. Just a copy and paste kind of error there.
Yeah, yeah, they just kind of just did that. So what do you? What are you suggesting?
I was just adding in the parentheses there, change Gloucester to Rockport in the specification notes.
Actually, so I had, okay.
And I don't know if that was already resubmitted or not, but.
Yeah, I still have it here, so I'll check. Okay. Yeah.
Is there an apostrophe in Jordan's? I usually see it without.
In what, Jordan?
Jordan's, as in Jordan's Lane.
Believe there is.
Bob is shaking his head, no.
Oh, me?
No, other Bob.
Bob Biznick, okay, yeah.
He's been here a lot longer than I have.
There's, there's a lot of missing apostrophes in the notes here, so I was gonna get to those next.
This is an extra one.
Yeah, maybe that one was floating around.
All right, any others?
On page two. The sentence was just a little choppy there. The second sentence that starts with Simmons states it is very unclear.
Yeah.
I just wanted that to read Simmons states that it's very unclear what the parking is for and what the proposed use of the property is to be
Right.
Something to that effect. And I think it was.
Council is, you know, misspelled.
Yeah.
But we all know who she's talking about.
Okay, and let's see. In paragraph six, member items, the very last sentence there, it says Shaw asked Simmons if he would be willing to work with the bylaws committee. And then it just stops there. I just wanted to add the words and he agreed. And public, paragraph seven, public comment, the first sentence there about Laura Kozicek. Suggesting that the planning board look into the use of the grandfather clause term. That sentence was just a little choppy as well, but I think.
She suggested that we look into, I think the phrase grandfather clause, we didn't get into it, but she suggested that we shouldn't use it. Fine. Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, I looked into that. The grandfather clauses apparently has its origins in after the Civil War. They grandfathered in white voters that couldn't pass the new literacy written tests for voting. As a way to, as a way to get the white voters back in without the black voters.
I think they, they said you could only vote if your grandfather could vote. That's how they.
Oh, really? Was that what it was?
Yeah.
Yeah. They said if you were able to vote before the Civil War, you're able to vote after the Civil War, so.
It's used all the time, you know?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
That's the, that's the reason it was. It was enfranchising the whites instead of defranchising the whites.
Right.
Then on the, the last page. In the Toby Arsenean comments there in the first paragraph. Said something about your difficulties and concerned about the KPM Tool Company parking. And then something got lost in the middle of that sentence. I think, I think it said, I think he was implying that the concerns for the parking are valid. Including that there is no proposed buffer zone along the street, which is something I had mentioned earlier in the conversation.
Yeah, so how would that seem true?
So I was gonna say your difficulties and concerns about the KPM Tool Company parking. Add the words are valid. Um, including that there is no proposed buffer zone along the street.
Okay.
And that's all I had.
Okay. Anybody else have anything for those eight minutes?
Yeah, I got something under the first paragraph of member items. It's pretty jumbled up. Would it help if I shared my screen or is I just gonna confuse things?
Why don't you read what, what you want?
Okay. Okay, the first paragraph, starting with Micas and ending with weather event. The first two sentences are about one thing.
Well, it doesn't, it doesn't end with weather, man. It says.
Paragraph six.
It's missing an indent by Shaw.
Wait, say that again.
Paragraph six, the first paragraph, starting with Micas and ending with weather event, I think. The line below that, starting with Shaw suggested should be another paragraph, but that's not what I'm talking about. I'm just talking about the first paragraph.
Okay.
They're conflating two different events. And that's a little hard to straighten out. So bear with me here. The first two sentences, Mika spoke about ending with breakout sessions. That should be followed by the last sentence, which is Cutner stated.
Wait a second. Right now, there are two sentences. The second one is really not a sentence, but it says good presentations and breakout sessions.
Yeah, leave that all the way it is. And then go to the last sentence, starting with Cutner stated and ending with weather event.
Yeah.
And move that up behind breakout sessions.
Yeah.
Cause that's all one thing. That was a town green event.
Okay, got it.
And then the next two sentences, starting with people were talking and ending with coastal floodplain, that's about a different event. And it is kind of jumbled. In that.
This is gonna get pretty complicated.
It is. That's why I was hoping to share a screen to show you.
Why don't you do better? Why don't you like share, send some language or mail it and we can, this is not critical, you know, we'll just plop it in here.
Yeah, trust me on that one paragraph. I'll, I'll straighten it out and send it to you.
Yeah, okay, great.
Thanks.
Okay. Anyone else for April 6?
We didn't. Not present at that meeting, so I won't be voting.
Well, yeah, okay, good. I'll say the same thing for the next meeting.
Did, did we correct the Jordans to remove the apostrophe?
You know what? I'm, I will not lose any sleep.
Okay. Somebody ever does a search for Jordans without the apostrophe, they won't find it.
I don't know about that. Anyway, okay, with these corrections, deletions and additions. Anybody have a motion to approve the minutes of April 6?
Move to approve as amended with the paragraph to be forthcoming about the mess under item six.
Seconded.
Hi.
Okay, seconded all in favor, roll call vote. Bob?
Hi.
Did you say?
Hi.
Upset, okay. Harry?
Abstain.
Now, I'll say approved, so that's. Next minutes are the April 20 minutes. And I was not present, so I can't share and comments. You guys, directions and deletions. Well, I had you guys go for it and we'll make them.
All right.
All right, Bob.
So I, section four, member items. First couple of sentences there, wanted to alter a bit. Says Simmons forward information on affordable housing regarding Lexington's TOV for the MBTA. Alma. And add, add the word and he stated it was interesting to look at. Let's see. Lexington has a little more density than Rockport period instead of comma. There and the proposed TOV areas, I would add on the next sentence, included several areas, all with varying densities. Versus the sentence that was there. And let's see. The sentence, the next sentence says, there was a great slideshow for the community. I just put a period there. Simmons was thinking, and I would add the words, it would be useful to study for future planning board presentations for the town and public hearings. Other than there's a typo on Essex County in the middle of that big paragraph there. Should be.
Not spelled E.
Essex is, Essex is misspelled.
And the dollar amount should be addressed.
Oh, missed that.
Comma.
Yeah, the comma should be a period at the sense there.
I just strike the sense.
What are you talking about? At the, oh.
Right in the middle, that paragraph after the withdrew the 500 billion. Should be 500,000 dollar.
Yeah.
And let's see. On the next page, right at the top of the page. The middle of the sentence there. Or the first sentence on that, the last page, it says Simmons, Simmons says it might cross with the work. I think it should say Simmons says this work will need to be cross-coordinated with the work the planning board is doing on the MBTA. So I'm just adding the words, need to be cross-coordinated.
Okay.
And then it says he's gonna look into that Simmons would like to bring some banking expertise. And then there's a period there. I would just say add, add to the end of that sentence into the R A H T.
All right, wait a second. I'm still writing this.
Sorry.
Hey, go ahead. I'm sorry. Where were you? Where were you?
So the, the last sentence there before five public comments, I would just add the words into the R A H T. At the end of that sentence.
Simmons would like to bring in some banking expertise?
Into the R A H T, yeah.
Okay. All right.
And let's see. That's Toby Arsenean comment in five public comments is a little confusing there. But yeah. I think it should say, first sentence there, Arsenean thinks that it is interesting that it was remarked that the housing around the MBTA would possibly be affordable housing. But that notion is not in the planning board's zoning code.
Okay.
And it comes together, I think.
Yep.
All right, that's it for me.
Yeah, I got a couple of things. You ready, Jason?
Am I ready?
Ready for my suggestions?
Yeah, I'm ready.
Okay, item three. At the end of second line, the word of through the word is on the next line.
Wait, second line.
At the end of the line, there's the word of.
Yeah.
And then through the next line, the word is. So I'm gonna strike of climate vulnerability, of climate vulnerable community is, strike that and replace it with should be.
Wait, Micas doesn't think definition.
Should be restricted.
Thinks the definition.
That's better, yeah.
Should be, okay.
And then the line below that, the comma, including local fishing persons, strike that. That's confusing.
Wait. Including local fishing persons?
Yeah, the, the phrase, including local fishing persons, that's kind of floating and doesn't add anything.
Okay.
So strike that.
Yeah.
And then back on member items where you were talking about the Essex County Community Organization, I'm not sure that's the proper group that applied to CPC, is it? Denise would know. And Peter would know, but.
Are you talking about our application, the Rockport Community Land Trust?
Yeah, the one that was withdrawn, the 500,000.
That's the Rockport Community Land Trust.
Yeah, that shouldn't be identified as echo then.
Oh, so it's a Rockport Community Land.
Oh, right, yeah.
That sounds better to me, from what I recall. Thank you. I got it and I'm done. We're done laundering our laundry in public here.
Yeah.
Okay, so you guys take it away on this one.
I move that we accept the minutes of April 20th, 2023, as noted.
As amended?
As amended.
I'll second that.
Second.
All in favor, roll call vote, yeah. Go ahead, guys. Bob?
Hi.
Tom?
Hi.
Harry?
Hi.
And I'm gonna abstain because I wasn't there. So motion carried minutes has changed, have been approved. And we are again current. Now, those were the minutes of April 20, so.
It's beautiful.
Beautiful thing. Yeah, it really is good.
Do we get a Rockport, a town of Rockport award for that or something?
Yeah.
Minutes Hall of Fame.
Round of applause.
A leftover lobster.
Okay, so let's move on to the substantive business here. We have site plan review for, from Robert Newman and Janet Klein for 9B Tars Lane. It's a porch addition, I believe. So it is subject to site plan review because I guess the size. So why don't? Who's here on this application? Ron, you wanna, you wanna talk about it?
Yeah, just briefly, excuse me. My wife and I own a condo in a two unit building on Tars Lane West. And the layout is shown in the plot plan that we submit. And we would like to build a covered porch across the entire front of our home, eight feet deep by 38 feet along. And the reasons are, well, we'd like to enjoy the use of that space in the front of the house. Also, the current landing in front of the front door is not very functional. It's very small and very hard to get in, especially if one has anything in, in one's hands. And so the porch would just make it easier to get in and out. And also, we plan to age in place and we will build this with, with a ramp in the future if necessary in mind. So one end of this will have a railing that can be removed if we ever need to put a ramp there. And that's really pretty much it. If, if there are any questions.
Yeah, and just, just to point out in your application, the reason this is going for site plan review at all is because I guess the building inspector put the two condo units, since they're attached, combined them and you were over 6,000 square feet, 6,384. But that's combined. Your, your dwelling space is not 6,384 square feet, is that correct?
Um, let's see.
Is it really?
No, it's, it's not. It's, the, the whole unit is, it's about 1,000 square feet per floor. So we have two floors and a partially finished basement.
Yeah, like 3,300, half of that really.
Right.
So, yeah, so I mean, this is you know, it's before us, a site plan review because of the size and the size only, and that size is only there because it's, it's a condo and the building inspector has included both units to get over 6,000 square feet. So, you know, you can do anything you want with your porch. You can tons of reasons why you want to put a porch up or no reason. It doesn't really matter when I put a porch up. So we, the next step would be to, if anybody has any questions, otherwise we'll move to set this for a public hearing. For the next thing that we have to do.
No questions here.
Yeah.
The only, the only the only comment I would say that I would have is.
I'm gonna have to step away for a minute. Hold on, guys.
Yeah.
Ron, on the drawings, the existing shows kind of a plain, flat surface and the the new one shows a lot of horizontal lines. Is that changing the collared or something?
Um, no, I'm not sure.
Just an artifact of the PDF or something, maybe.
Yeah, you know, I didn't notice that before, but no, our, our collaborate, it's final siding. We only plan on, you know, working or changing something that's affected by the construction.
Yeah.
That would be it.
Yeah, I think that's a, that's a graphic thing on the PDF. I've had that happen before.
Does yours look that way too, or is it just my version?
When, when you if you, if you enlarge your window, it might go away.
Okay.
Sometimes the PDFs just.
Yeah, I'm the one where my PDF changes the town seal into gibberish text.
Oh, yeah, right.
Actually, my original does show that difference that you noted, so, but I haven't noticed it before.
That's not material, I don't think.
What are we talking about? No, I don't think it is, but are we talking about the difference between the text on sheet EX 1.2 and A 1.2? You've got horizontal lines that would indicate the siding and no such.
The roof too, yeah.
Right, 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 right.
Yeah, I think it's somewhat common to show no material indications on the existing and should. Only on the new bit or the proposed, but I think that the materials are just turned off on the existing.
Okay.
Yeah.
You didn't miss anything, Jason.
Okay, well, the last thing I dealt with before I found someone trying to drive up on our lawn, it was a road, Amazon driver.
Oh, no.
Yeah, they were like, ah, I think I'm lost. I said, yeah, you sure are. So anyway. We need to set this for a public hearing for the this project at 9B Tars Lane. And I would say this is the fourth, I would say, would have to be the first meeting in June, in June, which I think is June 1st.
Yep.
So let's, you know, I'm assuming we'd have enough time. Ron, are you there?
Yes.
Yeah, well, I am not gonna be around tomorrow, but you need to get in touch with Mary Burgoyne in the morning and tell her that we schedule it for a public hearing. And I'll, when I get back on Monday, I'll assist you with that. But the main thing, she's gonna have to tell you what, what you need to do to make that happen, okay?
Okay.
You gotta send out a bunch of notices to your neighbors and things like that. Okay. So motion to schedule the site plan review for 9B Tars Lane West for a public hearing for June 1.
So moved.
Okay, roll call vote, seconded?
Second.
Seconded by Bob. Who made the, who made the motion? It was like a, Ario.
Eric can have it.
Okay, Harry. All right. Harry made the motion. Roll call vote, Harry.
Hi.
Um.
Hi.
Um, hi.
Malbone favored. So anyway, that's scheduled for a public hearing on June 1. And unless for some reason we can't, won't have enough time, in that case, it will be on our next meeting, which will be on the 15th. But in the meantime, we'll shoot for June 1, Ron, and get everything set for that, okay?
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
You're welcome. All right. Next item is the Cove at Rockport LLC. There is no application pending. I guess the, the owners represented by Bob Biznick wanted to just, just talk about some threshold issues here. I guess that's, I'm assuming why you want to talk about it. And I have talked with your architect. And I have sent her some information for site plan review. She wanted the the site plan review checklist, which would apply only to major construction projects and not knowing what is going on here, I have no idea, but she can figure it out. Bob, do you wanna tell us, ask what your questions are and?
Certainly. Yes. Good evening, Jason, members of the board, Bob Biznick. I, I live at 40 Jordan's Lane and thus I'm sensitive to the apostrophe issue. And I'm an attorney in town with an office at 45 Broadway. And I represent the Cove. And as you may know, this is a functioning inn and it was formerly the Peg Leg, which was an inn and for a while back in the day, a fairly large restaurant. And the group is doing just, I think, a tremendous job in, in upgrading and running this operation. And they've been very successful. They're proposing to add. And they've been very successful, they're proposing to add eight new guest suites and. They have right now thirteen, so that will bring it up to twenty one. All the work they're proposing is going to be done within the existing footprint of the building in the back. And the expansion will occur primarily on the first and second floors. There's a small addition to the third floor to accommodate staircase. There'll be an exterior accessible ramp. They have gotten a waiver of the requirement for having an elevator. And we have already started on the permitting process. We went before and received zoning approval. And I just a few moments ago received the the final written decision, it's going to be filed with the clerk tomorrow. And the, there was. There were letters in support and there were concerns from some neighbors, mostly about the general state of the parking in the area and the fact that when people come. To the inn even presently, they sometimes pull over on Beach Street or on King Street and. Park there for a short period of time while they bring in their luggage. And so there were some conditions to our approval. Mostly centered around parking. So we have to provide a written parking protocol, there are fifty three parking spaces, so the parking isn't a problem. The issue is it's not contiguous with the building and but but the owners are putting in procedures so that everybody knows. Not to park on King and Beach Streets, that's part of the requirements. Arriving guest information has to include the mark parking areas and places.
Bob, is this all in the decision that you're talking about? What you're telling?
All in the decision, I just wanted to give you a little bit of background, we're also going to the Conservation Commission. And we will go to. To parking and traffic and, you know, work out any issues relative to signage. And so when we went to see Paul Orlando, he said that this was a major construction project because. It's the expansion within a five year period of an existing building. Which would have been classified originally as a major construction project by adding more than fifteen hundred square feet, and I think they're adding about twenty five hundred square feet. And so the the plans in place are fairly sophisticated, we just wanted to, I think. You know, that I've I've been told that it's good practice to go before you and just introduce the project, which we're doing tonight, getting ready to apply. Ellen Levine is on this Zoom and she's from Treehouse Design and and I would ask that. She now have the floor a little bit and tell you a little bit more about the project and perhaps.
I mean, we're really, you know, it's, I appreciate what you've been saying about it, I'm I'm somewhat familiar with it, but. I thought you guys questioned some threshold question you wanted to ask us, that's why we're.
Yes, and we we do, and that's what.
What you're telling me now and, you know, introducing the architect and everything, that. That is usually what you do when you actually have an application.
Right.
Have a question about. Was the building inspector, you think he was wrong, or are you major or minor, or why do you need site plan? Something like that would be, you know, something I would think you'd want to have that issue now, you want to bring it up.
Yeah, no, what I, what I was. Whether I, what I was saying was that she's going to request certain waivers. And she wanted to talk to you about those issues and sort of introduce the topics so that as we prepare the application. Will will be able to hone in on on topics that you're concerned about and maybe minimize topics that you're not concerned about.
Well, we can't grant, we can't even talk about waivers now, we don't have an application, so we can't. Prejudge requests for waivers, which, I mean, I haven't looked at the law right immediately, but I think. Request for waivers need to be in writing anyway, so let's, let's hold off on that, okay? I mean, if that, if that's what Ellen's gonna be talking about, then. We're, I don't think it's appropriate to address that tonight.
Well, I think she wanted to to be able to focus on areas that you might think are more important than other areas, for example, lighting versus other things. And just sort of generally talk from it into two about the project, but if you don't want her to do that.
Yeah, well, we, yeah, we really need an application, we need to see your plans, I mean.
Okay.
We can't really talk about stuff kind of in the abstract, we need to see what is there. You know, like lighting, I, you know, how can anybody comment on lighting without seeing what the lighting plan is? Oh, I I think we need to wait on that, but if you're, if you're okay with. You know, you said that Paul said it was a, explain why he said this was a major construction project, I missed that. What was the reason?
Yeah, he cited. Your, your bylaw. Three B Roman numeral six. I guess that's part of what Ellen wanted to really seek is is whether you're going to consider this a major project. Or a minor project, because that is within your discretion in Roman numeral five, just above that. So I think that was what she wanted to talk to you about.
Well, it's in our discretion to make a minor. A major project, it's not in our discretion to make a major construction project into a minor one. So that's, that's what Roman numeral five says.
Yeah.
If we're. Let's just look at the Roman numeral six, the expansion. Five year period of an existing building. Which would have been classified as a major construction project originally. By fifteen hundred square feet of gross floor area or thirty percent increase in gross floor area, whichever amount is less. So I, I, you know, this is not entirely clear, but it sounds like. If it's an expansion of a building that had, that had site plan review. And the building would have been a major construction project. A certain degree of expansion would mean the expansion would also be considered a major construction project. Because it was done within a five year period. Is that what, what? How does that apply here?
Well, here's the background, so I went to speak with you. And about this and asked you if you thought this required site plan review, and you sent me to Paul Orlando. Paul was away for a few, but we knew we needed zoning relief. I asked Alan Battistelli if he thought this needed site plan review, he didn't think so. Right, right before our hearing, when Paul returned from vacation, I went in and saw him about it. And he cited that section and and thought it did need site plan review. So I think that that it may be a close call, I don't know.
When was this?
That's why we're here tonight.
Yeah, when was this built originally?
Oh, a hundred years ago or so.
So this expansion is an expansion of a building that was been around for a hundred years?
Yes.
Was there any other expansion within the last five years?
I don't believe so. If, I mean, we certainly would rather not have to go through sites when we do, believe me.
Yeah, I, 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 you know, I I'm gonna have to talk with Paul about this and. And I may even talk with town council about it. Because, because my, my impression from reading this is that. It's. Yeah. I'll, I'll withhold judgment, let's say that.
Okay.
I can't do this, but. Yeah, let me get, let me get back to you on this issue. You don't have an application pending, I'll find out about this. Hopefully, in, you know, the relatively near future and get back to you about that. After I talk with Paul and and like I said, maybe town council too about. What, what this exactly is supposed to mean. Because. If it means that if you have a building that, that's been around for a hundred years, but if we, if it was built. It would be a major construction project for site plan review. You know, that sounds odd. So.
I, my first impression was that we did not need site plan review and that's what, what Mr. Battistelli's impression was, but but of course.
You keep on reciting Alan Battistelli, Bob, I don't, his opinion. On site plan review is not really relevant here, so.
Okay.
You know. Okay. But the building inspector's opinion is and town council's opinion is also. So I will, I will consult both of them. And get back to you ASAP, because I know you want to get going on this.
That'd be great, thank you.
Thank you. Did you say something?
I just had one, I had one comment, just is.
I think Ellen had her hand up.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Yeah, go ahead, Ellen.
I was gonna say the zoning drawings have a lot of information on them, so we could send those to you or drop off a copy if you'd like. What they are on file with the zoning.
I actually sent them to to the planning board.
Oh, you already did, great.
Yes.
That's done.
Thank you. Let you know, and you know, if you need it, we'll go forward.
Roger that.
Well, if not, then you're free to go.
Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. Okay. Uh, next item. The landing group application, who is here for that? Nobody's here for the landing group? Going once, going twice. Nobody landed? I don't really know what's going on here, tell you the truth. We got, we did get a very lengthy letter from. Bernie. Angley. Which I, which I've read and I assume everybody else has read, I've also talked about it with town council and. You know, other than kind of. Complaining about a lot of things, doesn't really say much. It's the legal conclusions in the first few pages are absolutely off the wall. And they're just unsupportable by the authorities that are cited, and that's. My opinion as a lawyer, retired lawyer, and also town council's opinion. But in any event, that doesn't really matter. I'm surprised that no one's here for this meeting. I, I, you know, we don't generally do anything on applications, we don't do anything on applications if the applicant isn't present. So the applicant isn't present, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna table this. And, you know. I don't really understand. What, since, since Mr. Angley insists that all communications. Be had in in the presence of the planning board. Under some theory of his about ex parte communications, then. If he's not here to talk with the planning board, then we can't have any communications. So. I'm gonna table this application. You know, they're on the agenda and they, they should have known that. And we got nothing from them. This is some kind of. Game that they're playing, or this is just an oversight on their part, or. I don't know. And absolutely no communication from them. Okay. That's, that's all I have to say about this.
Do we need a motion? No.
I mean, emotional what? It's just, you know, the application doesn't, isn't getting heard.
Yeah.
Tonight. I wouldn't even want to make a motion, I mean, there's no, there's no applicant to say one thing or another. I'll have to just put it over to the next meeting. Maybe by then he'll talk with town council and get, and explain what's going on. Okay. Next item on the agenda. Oh, that you, discussion of signage change, you wanted to. Bob, you wanted to take that off for what, for the next meeting?
Uh, yeah, as. When we first put it on the agenda for tonight, we thought we had. A pretty clear understanding of all the changes we needed to make, but. After that, the bylaw committee had had some additional discussions that they had to take to town council to figure out which. Which law or which zoning bylaw trumps which other one, so till they get that figured out. There's no higher I P in what they're doing, so. We have to, probably it's worthwhile just to postpone it until we understand all of that.
Okay. All right, well, that's postponed, thank you, now we have member items. I have, I have a few things. Why don't we start with the, just want to talk to you a little about this. Letter of. Support that I had written on April twenty eighth of two thousand twenty three to. At the request of John Lopez of the, you know, the conservation agent. To the municipal vulnerability preparedness program. And I know that, I guess that was, I don't know, I knew now that, the reading the minutes that had been discussed on your April twenty meeting. Couple of things I didn't, I certainly didn't try to. Usurp the board by writing this. The problem was that. The, they, this letter was required last week. And if it wasn't written last week, it would not, it would not have been timely to submit with. The application for this grant. So it's kind of like, you know, we have a, a cool, another agency in town who we work with. Who, which has requested this, just a letter of support, they've gotten other letters of support, including from. Some local. Town committees or boards, but also from Senator Bruce Tar. It's basically a similar, you know, letter of support is basically a boilerplate document. I did see. Tom Mekes's concerns about this. About the idea that it was just limited to. You know, certain communities, the effect on certain communities in town and. I did see John Lopez's. Response to that, which is basically that was kind of a statement of interest and actually the. If the grant is obtained, it would be quite a bit broader than that. And it would include areas like, you know, Long Beach in the discussions and the planning board would be involved with it. So. That was, that was reassuring. But, you know, what, what possible harm is there to us? Or to anybody to, you know, write a letter of support. For another agency getting, you know, grant money for a project, a coastal resiliency planning project, which. Which sounded pretty good. And that if, if indeed we said, no, we're not going to do it, or. You know, well, it's, we'll just wait and then it'll be too late. You know, it sets, it sets a tone, I don't know if it's a tone that we want to set with. An agency that we cooperate with. And. So I, I wrote the letter and, you know, and I usually don't do that, I usually will. You know, it'll be a consensus of the board, but I would be hard to, hard pressed to imagine that at the end of the day. You know, it'll be a consensus of the board, but I would be hard to, hard pressed to imagine that at the end of the day. That the board would decide not to support this application. That would be strange, frankly, so. Anyway, that's, that's what I have to say about that. And I did get reassurance from John Lopez that despite, uh, you know, what Tom brought up, that the um. The, it's the economic impact of coastal resiliency and that goes very broadly. Very broad, and that's going to be what's, when, if this grant is obtained, the, the area of study is going to be quite a bit broader than. The um, what was stated in the, you know, statement of interest. Any questions or comments, otherwise I'll move on.
There could be a lesson here, you said we're going to be working with this other group in town.
Conservation Commission?
Indeed.
Yeah.
And uh, I think the problem was, they didn't work with anybody else in town in drafting the expression of interest. They would have caught this apparent flaw if they had asked around. And I think everybody else who wrote a letter of support just did it uncritically. Without reading what the definitions are and what the focus is, and that's sad, this thing just went through. Unexamined and it should not have, and it should have had more input from others in the, in the early stages. And I know there are those in town that think, oh, this is just an administrative thing and should be done by town staff. I don't agree.
Well, you know, from what John told me, um, Tom, was that the, the. Of, in the statement of interest was really uh, focused on. The topics that were of interest to the, to the grant um, issuers. And uh, in, in that statement of interest, but that it is not going to be limited. Applies to many, many different areas, and I think, you know, if this, if this does come out, um. That, you know, with p- communities that are economically disadvantaged, pigeon cove being one of them. And you, you know, the lobster fishermen being another area, another group that, you know, is. Hanging on by their fingernails that, you know, those, those were kind of the focus of the. Statement of interest, you know, it may not have been done a hundred percent right, I have no idea, but I don't think that we're. By writing a letter of support for this, it's a bad thing.
If I, may I?
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, there's, there's one individual in town who has been um, expressing his dissatisfaction with not having participated. He's a resident, um, he's not on any committee or board, um. John Lopez worked with a great number of people on preparing his proposal, so saying that he didn't work with anyone else is not correct. Um, and um, he actually also worked with a, a very reputable consulting firm. On this, so there are a lot of people involved with drafting the proposal, and one individual's um, unhappiness with not having been included. Is really not, not appropriate, uh, as far as I'm concerned, discussion for the planning board.
Well, you know, Denise, I appreciate that insight, but I don't, I don't think anybody is saying that, no. We shouldn't have, this grant should not be the subject of an application. Or that we should not do this, and so it, to me, that's, that's the issue, and like I said, the only reason. I wrote this letter is because it was between meetings, and if we didn't have it out. I mean, the deadline was last Friday, and if it wasn't done. There wouldn't be a letter of support, and John Lopez asked me several times for this letter over, you know, the last. Uh, period of time, I just hadn't gotten to it and focused on it, because you know, we had other things going on. So uh, it was like either write it or forget it, and then not have any letter of support, and I, and I can tell you, he was very appreciative. That, that we did this, and um. I think it's a, a, a show of cooperation that is probably a good thing. You know, and we'll see, maybe those things be coming up later where our show of appreciation here will, you know, make. Other people more, you know, appreciative of us too, so. The way it goes, so. Okay, the other, I, I don't think we need to talk about this anymore unless someone wants to, but um. The other member item that I had was um. The I, you know, and I did approach this with emails to everyone and kind of got a poll from all um. About this is, you know, we've. We shut down planning board for decades had in-person meetings, uh, when I started in two thousand eighteen, they were in. The, you know, in the annex and the big table there, and that was not the optimal place. As anybody knows who's been to the other meetings, we then moved to the um. To the town uh, hall to the room A, conference room A, which is where we had our last public hearing. And that worked out pretty well, we had microphones, we had studio sixteen twenty-three recording it. Uh, and we had also our own recording of it, we were able to do the minutes from it, and um. I, I don't know how many people, Tom, let me ask you, were you on the board? Before we had just meetings?
Yes.
When, when were you first uh, elected?
Twenty nineteen, I think.
That was like just before.
Yeah, just before.
May twenty nineteen, we, we shut down in March of twenty twenty, and for the rest of you. I don't think any of you have had, you know, in-person planning board meetings, um, so. Uh, the, you know, the COVID. The reason for Zoom was COVID. And the fear of hell contagion. That reason is no longer existent, I mean, it may be for some people, but for the vast majority of people, it does not exist anymore. In fact, the Board of Health, the board who is, you know, really watches these issues. Meets in person, so what does that tell you? I mean, they're meeting in person, I just traveled to Atlanta a few weeks ago, back and forth on a. Two different flights each way, and I can tell you, I can count on. Two hands, the number of people who are wearing, you know, masks on those flights, so. I, there is some, yeah, granted, Zoom does have some positive things, you can sit in your living room and participate. Um, but also they're positive, they're very positive things about being in person too. And especially for our board, because we do deal with large plans. And we're talking about them, and sometimes we're talking about more than one. Plan at, at the same time, and if we have them all spread out, we can look at them, and um. I would like to give it a try, and I say a try, because this would only be, it's only, we only have to commit from May. Through July to do, go back to in-person, which was the rule before the exception. And, and try it out. And at the end of, at the end of July, we'll say, hey, this is really, either this is really good, you, we all like in-person now, or. If we don't, then we'll go back to Zoom, you know, and uh, that's okay, but I think. I, I think it, I feel something's missing um, with the Zoom meetings for the planning board. Well, that's just me, so I did poll, and I think uh, um, Harry was in favor of trying in-person. As I recall, Bob and, and Peter, who are not, Peter, who's not here, were kind of ambivalent about it, they said either one. And Tom was, did not want to do, go to in-person. So I think with that, unless there's someone who's changed their mind about that, let's. I think we should try in-person and see how it goes, you know?
It could put a dent in attendance if someone is out of town or.
Well, you know.
Driving back from work, for example.
That is a possibility, um. Tom, you know, it, it could, but I have to say, I, our last public hearing. Which we did do in person in that very room, uh, was very well attended, so um. You know, there are a lot of companies that are now trying to get their people back. To come to the office in person and be in person, because there is some, something that you do gain, but look. I'm just saying, this is, I really consider this temporary. And so let's, I'm not saying, well, well, this will be forever, I'm sorry, guys, let's do it and see how, how everyone. You know, think, what everyone thinks about it in July, no big deal, we can go back to do this again if, if we want to. But I would like to start this um, as of our next meeting, which will be May eighteenth. And we're all set up for it, we have, we're all ready to go.
And you'll have recordings by sixteen twenty-three of each meeting?
We'll have recordings by sixteen twenty-three, it'll be broadcast by sixteen twenty-three, um, I talked with Cindy. Malcolm, the woman who does our minutes, she's fine with this, uh, either. Either looking at the sixteen twenty-three recording, or, you know, we used to bring a tape, a backup tape recorder into the room. And, and record it that way, she's fine with either one, so I think we're, and obviously, that's, that's the way the minutes were done before. March of two thousand twenty, so we can go back to that, um, and I think we have better minutes now anyway.
Anybody get any batteries for the microphones?
What, the batteries, right, real batteries, not rechargeable batteries that run out in a half an hour, yeah, yeah, we'll, we'll make sure that that's. That's the case, so just keep that in mind for the next meeting, we'll be hoofing it over to town hall.
I think my, my answer was rather complex, I think I said, uh, you know, if, if we can. I could see doing Zoom meetings into the future, as long as we supplemented. Uh, our meetings with additional, you know, public hearings where we could talk about these more complex things with the larger maps and. And we're getting into the uh, MBTA stuff and all that, it would be really helpful, but I think uh. Yeah, let's see, let's see how it goes, and uh, whether we can uh. Keep getting the crowds that we, we got on some of these things, I think the next months are going to be uh. Peaking a lot of people's interests, so.
The MBTA stuff.
Yeah, the MBTA stuff and uh, portable housing stuff, um, that might happen as well. Um, I think, I think people are getting a little more involved in it, because they're interested. Yeah, so we'll see what happens.
Yeah.
We need to vote on that, Jason, or just?
I don't think so, I mean, the chairman's, I mean, I, obviously, I want to do everything collaboratively that I can. But, and, including this, and I, I got the message that, let's give it a try, was kind of the. Overriding idea here, uh, so, let's, you know, let's give it a try, if you want to. Yeah, so we'll start our meetings. I guess we could vote, if we want, I mean, Peter's not here. So.
Yeah. That's fine with me, I don't, I don't know whether we need to.
So when would we start?
We, we'd start on uh, Mar- May eighteenth, our next meeting would be there. And we, that's how it would be advertised too, yeah. Anybody have any, do you? Yeah, okay.
Jason, uh, so we would go back to having a uh, package of papers prepared by Mary.
As opposed to what?
Emails.
Now we just get everything by email, but back when we met in person, we would have a package for each, each member. Printed out, the plans, the documents.
Well, okay, let's talk about that, um. I mean, I don't think we have to do that, I mean, the, I don't think everybody got a full set of the plans, um. You mean, like a large set, there's going to definitely be a large set at least, at least certainly one.
Yeah, I think in order to properly. Yeah, in order to properly prepare, if Mary can send out what information she can send out via email. Would be beneficial for, you know, member preparation.
Sure, she can do that, I mean, she did that for, like, she did that for me tonight, and it was very helpful. I mean, that, you know, these days, you get an email, you just print it out, I mean, it's. It's a matter of Mary printing it out, or you printing it out?
Yep.
Well, I recall, I recall she would print out some eleven by seventeens, which I can't do.
I don't, I don't, I'll talk with her about that.
If they don't need to be eleven seventeen, we don't need them, but if there's something that really ought to be that size, then somebody needs to print them, that I can't do it.
Well, but there will be, at the meeting, there will be, and I can't do it either, but at the meeting, there will be um. You know, twenty by thirty plan, the full-size plans, which we'll all be able to look at at the same time. So that, I think, beneficial.
Okay.
And it'll, it'll save on trying to, someone trying to share screens and, you know, having technical issues.
Yeah.
We could still use the monitor in the room, if you want the whole audience to be able to see at once.
Oh, sure, absolutely, yeah, yeah, absolutely, that's, that would actually be, I would encourage that. For sure, I mean, it's always an issue with, with our board, because, you know, we're talking about these plans and. The public can't see what we're talking about, so, yeah, if we can project those on the monitor. That would be, uh, that would be highly beneficial. For sure.
Well, the way it is now, they are online, so people at home can. Display them.
Well, you know, if I had um. A nickel for everybody who never looked online for plans, I'd be a rich guy around now, you know. I give you an example, today I went to, I went to um. Market Basket, I got rid of my plastic bags, they have a plastic bag recycle thing, and there was a big sign up there, and it said. No bottles, you know, right in front of it, no bottles, and I was going to throw my plastic bags in, and guess what was in the thing? Four bottles, you know, so it's like people. You know how it is, Tom, people will say, well, why didn't I get the plans or what, you know, it's just, it's very hard, but you're right, I mean, we are. We are doing more now. To make our documents accessible than the planning board has ever done in its history. Ever, and it's been, it's been great. Okay, that's uh, that's all I have for member items.
Um, I've got a couple things, um, just. One update, and then one just question about logistics here, um, I am talking to um. Rob Craig, um, about a. An app that's out there that's been developed by the state that is uh, pretty interesting called the. Residency, um, I think, actually Denise uh, may have forwarded that. Uh, to us, that was one of the, one of the tools from the toolkit, and it's actually, uh, it's interesting, uh, we're going to talk to. The makers of the app on uh, May ninth at ten AM, if anybody else is interested in joining that conversation, but um. With Rob and uh, and the, the folks at uh, MHP, um. But basically, it'll, it's, it's a map that shows the residential density of uh, any. Any parcel or any town in state of Massachusetts, uh. And it seems to, at, at first glance, have better information on its GIS. System than, than we have currently, so we're going to talk about that and how, how they got that information, where it is. Um, it, it specifically refers to the uh, number of dwelling units on a, an existing parcel, for example, that kind of stuff. Um, which has been hard to decipher in the assessors' stuff, and that'll be really helpful for the uh, MBTA efforts. Later on here with our consultant, or just us noodling around with uh, ideas. Um, and um. The other, uh, the other question I sort of had was, uh, you know, I, I had started to review those uh. One seventy-five Granite Street plans in terms of how I would look at it as a site plan. One seventy-five Granite Street plans in terms of how I would look at it as a site plan review stuff.
Yes.
All the, all the criteria. And even though we're tabling this, is in terms of the logistics of how this normally would work, if we're all. Looking at a more complicated site plan review. Should we turn in our comments individually to you? Or. Seems like we'll have like five different. Separate efforts, kind of looking at plans and. And so forth, or should we just? Openly discuss these at the next meeting?
The latter.
Yep.
Yeah, we want to discuss them in public. And that, that's another, you know, the applicant isn't. Here, so.
Right.
Any discussion we have, they're not even gonna know what we discussed. So, yeah, we, that's the whole, that's the. Purpose of this is to. Have an open, public discussion. Of different viewpoints and. Allowing the applicant. Where needed to respond. Or add or, you know, whatever. So, yeah, so. That's what we'll do when we have. When someone's here for the applicant.
All right.
Thanks for asking.
Yeah, so I, I realize we can't. Disseminate information and then bat it back and forth amongst each other, but. You know, I just, I just found a lot of. They changed the title on the plans, for example, and they didn't do much. Else to add information that would make it useful for.
No.
Analyzing this in terms of site plan review for. A minor or a major project.
Yeah, I, I noticed that the map that they used. They just changed the label on a map that was prepared over a year ago. They didn't do anything on the map.
Not that I could see it looked identical to what they had submitted before, so there's. There's very little information on there about zoning and dimensions and. Specifications.
Well, look, I.
Offers and all that stuff.
Okay, well, well. Maybe someone will show up on May eighteenth. But that'll mean Mr. Engley or whoever shows up will be at our meeting.
That would be lovely.
Yeah.
All right, and then just a question to you. I, I didn't know if there had been any movement or. Interest on the. MBTA or the HPP consultants that. He asks out there whether there's been any. Activity.
Well, yeah, we had a meeting with, you mean. With the consultants, Denise, you, you want to talk about that a little bit? You, you were there. This is muted.
She's muted a little bit.
Yeah, no, I was, I was playing mute tag with, with. Yeah, that was on my list of things I wanted to mention. We met, it was Jason, Mitch, Herm. And me, and we met with the consultants from Answer. And I thought it was a good meeting. They've, they've got experience in this area and. I think Mitch has given them the word that we are gonna hire them, so I expect the next step is to be, get a contract signed so they, they can get started. So that's, that's in the works.
All right, moving forward. So it's. It's good.
Sorry, I, I missed a beat there. Is that the housing production plan or something? Great.
Thanks to everybody. The several people on this Zoom who. Were just doggedly persistent. In pursuing. Getting this done. I think that helped.
Okay, good. I think, I think that was all the items I had.
Anyone else?
Nothing for me.
I can report one, one thing. This past Saturday, the Cape Ann Trail Stewart sponsored a. Barrier Beach Walk and Talk and. Rockport's own Eric Hutchins was. Quite educational about showing the. The function of the, the dunes and the marshes at. Primarily at Cape Edge and Pebble Beach. We pointed over at Long Beach, but you know, it's a little different situation there with the seawall. So that's an ongoing educational effort, I think that was. Quite a useful thing to attend.
Great. Okay, Denise, did you have your hand up?
I was gonna wait until you did public comment. I, I don't wanna.
Okay, anybody else have a member? Item? I, I can't think of. Anything else I have today. We'll go to public comment. Okay, Denise.
Thank you. Two, two things, we talked about the housing production plan. The two other things I wanted to mention, the comment that. Bob, you were editing in some minutes about the TOVOD. I just want to make a correction that ten percent of any housing that is going to be built in the transit-oriented village. Area, assuming it's more than, I guess, what is it, six units? Ten percent of that will have to be affordable. So affordable housing is within the purview of the, of this, the planning board. In that area. So just a point of information. The other thing is. I sent that email to all of you about Chappa and the MBTA communities liaison that they have. And there's a call on Monday, if anyone's interested in joining it with other MBTA communities. They're kind of offering these once a month calls. And they're also sponsoring sort of working groups. If we want to partner with, for example, Manchester. And maybe one other community, they'd be willing to facilitate those discussions and help us with. Community engagement. So if anyone is interested, let me know. And I'll share, I'll forward the Zoom info and you're welcome to join.
Yeah, Denise, I'd be interested in that. So please do.
Okay.
Yeah, me too.
Could I, could I build on that? We had a speaker from Chappa.
It's this same lady, Lily.
And, and it's a recording that's available on their Rockport Affordable Housing Coalition website, RAHC.us.
This is different, though. This is, this is specifically for MBTA communities and developing community engagement. But it's the same lady. I'll, I'll just send this to everybody.
Yeah, why don't you do that?
My, my intention on the minutes, Denise was.
No, I, I understand.
To just say that the MBTA doesn't, doesn't have affordable housing, and I think that's what Toby was trying to say, but he just left the concert. Conference room here.
No, he's here.
Oh, there he is, up top now. He changed, he moved to the top of my screen.
When your hand goes up, you move to the head of the line.
Yeah, I missed that. Yes, so the Chappa thing would be interesting. The more we can learn about that, the better.
Yep.
Okay, any other public comments?
Think Toby does have his hand up there.
Yeah, looks like it. Robert, are you?
Thank you. Toby Arsenian ninety-five Granite Street, am I on?
You're on.
Yes, what was said by Denise about the zoning for the train station is not correct. If you look at the section on housing balance, which is all the town currently has. On the subject of affordable housing, it is the issuance of a special permit. That triggers the requirement for the public housing. Affordable housing and. Your train station overlay district is to suit the state by right, not by special permit. So as I had pointed out. And as you should have noticed. And still don't notice, there would be no affordable housing, not the ten percent that Denise is referring to. One other thing, these studies, the coastal resiliency studies. The one that you've just sent a letter endorsing. I would say mistakenly. There's another one as well. Before the community preservation, Eric Hutchins and somebody else privately. Out of the great goodness of their hearts and on behalf of the town of Rockport, which is rather strange. Are also applying for. A study for coastal resiliency. That was for fifty thousand and. When it comes to applications for. The community preservation, you're supposed to cite other sources of money and cited there was. If it's the same study or a different one, it is not made clear. A similar study for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So are we talking about one study, two studies, three studies? I don't know. And I thought Tom Mekus's remarks about the formal. Nature of what the study was to address were on target. You know, it's aimed at. Social justice. Well, the only social justice that you might talk about around here. If you're being honest, is, you know, what those who are neighbors of the train station suffer. Which you choose to ignore. And there was some other peculiar part of the way it was framed by the state. But unless you subscribe to all of their politically correct nonsense. You don't have a chance at the study, so I guess you either. Swallow your scruples and sign or not. My interest in all these studies, aside from wishing to understand how many there are and. Who's coordinating it is that when you actually get the study. Denise spoke about public interest in it. That's the point at which public interest becomes key. That the study be presented to the public when it's in draft form so that people can. Appreciate it or disparage it, ask questions about it, endorse it. And that, at that point, the consultants, if they're there. Forced to be there, they should be, would have answers to all those questions. And responses to all of the. Objections. That is, if you're really interested in a public process. That's all.
Okay. Well. Anyone else have any comments? There being no further comments for the public comment period, we have a motion to adjourn.
Slow moved.
Second.
Moved by Tom, seconded by Harry. Roll, 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 Harry.
Hi.
I answered for Bob, sorry.
Favor meeting adjourned seven fifty-four. Have a good night, everyone. See you on the. Okay, where are your pants? Thanks.